Please respond by stating present. Councilmember Ronan Foeburg.
Present.
Leibert.
Present.
Ward.
Present.
Johnson.
Present.
E. Conger.
Present.
Nielsen.
Present.
Norvstrup.
Present.
Mayor Shawman.
Present. Please stand with me for the Pledge of Allegiance. I do have a slight modification request for our agenda today. We had looking to add an executive session which will push to the beginning of the meeting if that works for people to discuss a couple of things with the next step of hiring and[233.04][233.04]interviewing city manager candidates. So with that adjustment, I would take a motion to approve this week's agenda.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion, Leibert. Second, Ward. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed, nay. Motion carries. Second item is the approval of minutes for the meeting which occurred on August 4th, the work session which occurred on August 11th, and then omitted payroll section. Looks like it probably didn't, wasn't included in that previous meeting, but we will accept it at this time.
I'll move to approve the minutes and items B and C.
Motion, Johnson. Second, Knobster. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Motion carries. No one has indicated they wish to speak at the open forum, so we will jot ahead to our consent calendar, ten items of routine city business. You can choose to abstain from any one of those things. If it is a conflict of any kind, take a motion to approve our consent calendar. Move to approve.
Second.
Motion, Ward. Second, Foeburg. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed, nay. Motion carries. No old business. We'll skip right to that executive session, which I don't expect to take too long, so apologize to everyone listening and standing in the back. We'll have you guys just find a spot in the middle. Like I said, we'll keep this really brief and we'll get you guys back in here shortly.
We had a council member that was trying to get out a little earlier, and I believe you'll be leaving a little early as well.
I might leave after we do my item.
Fair enough, so we'll move right along to our lottery notice. This is, oh, excuse me, that's not correct. We will talk about, the paper's got all shuffled out of order, public hearing and possible approval of a new retail on off sale malt beverage and South Dakota farm wine license for very necessary LLC which does businesses, eerie vibes sip and paint, or irie vibes sip and paint. Nobody, it looks like they're here to speak in favor or oppose this, so I would take a motion from the council if someone was so inclined.
Move to approve.
Second. Motion, leave it, second. Ward, anyone from the council have anything to contribute before we take a vote? All in favor, please say aye.
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 Next, we've got, oh, any opposed? Motion does carry. Next, we've got a discussion of proposed revisions of the city council handbook and possible notice of intention to amend that handbook at some later date. Ron, walk us through the handbook updates and what is your thinking on those items?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I previously provided the council with a memo explaining the necessity of amending the handbook. There was a a twenty twenty-five legislative act that amended a statute involving the way voting is conducted by city councils. That statute is nine dash eight dash ten. And in reviewing those changes to the statute, it became apparent that I would need to propose and recommend that the council make some amendments to the council handbook. And in the overview that I provided as part of the council agenda memo, I note that there would be a change to Article nine of the handbook, and these are fairly simple changes, but what they do is they make it clear that the roll call vote will be necessary, or depending on if it's a an ordinance that there would be a requirement that five members of the council approve any ordinance amendment. It can't just be a majority of council members present, which is what we have had, and frankly, which has been, as I understand, it's state law. But this change made it clear that it has to be a majority of all the members, so that's the primary change. So we have a change at Article nine, a change at Article sixteen, and a change at Article nineteen. And then lastly, at Article seventeen, there was, that's a provision regarding filling council vacancies. And we had proposed in that initial procedure to conduct part of that that process by secret ballot. And this change, this statutory change says no secret ballots shall be permitted. So I did propose a change to make that a spoken ballot. And as the council talks about this, if you wish to, you know, address any revisions tonight, we certainly can. What we need to do by our council handbook is provide notice of our intention to amend the council handbook. And anything that is a notice, we automatically publish, so we're publishing that notice. But honestly, that notice is really for each of you, so that each of you have an opportunity to be present if there's any amendments to the council handbook. Not necessarily for the public, but it's for you to decide how you're gonna operate and order this, the conduct of your meetings. So if anyone has any changes that they'd like to see to the red line language in the council handbook, this is a time to talk about them. If you'd rather just wait, work with me on those changes, we can, we can make those changes too. In the meantime, I have a motion that I've prepared, proposed motion for the council, which would be to authorize publication of the notice of your intention to amend the handbook at the September second, twenty twenty-five meeting, and to have us publish that notice.
So walk us through the, where do the names come from? In this instance, that doesn't change in terms of the vacancies.
Oh, okay, let's, let's go there quick. So it actually begins on page thirty-two of the, of the council handbook, and I'm not sure what it's numbered on the, on the PDF for the agenda packet. But if you'll see, beginning at section seventeen E, we add in the word spoken ballot to make it clear that we're going to deal with a spoken ballot. And honestly, this isn't the only way we can do it. We could do it by a written ballot. It would just be that written ballot would have to be announced, and the votes would have to be recorded out loud. Okay, so I, I think I had indicated to you that you can make a change to this if you want, and if you prefer to do that, that's fine. But I have, I have put in the spoken ballot, and then F lays out what each member shall vote orally for one of the nominees. So let's say, for example, you interviewed four candidates. At the, at the close of those interviews, you are now seeking to determine who your nominees are gonna be. You would each have at that opportunity a time to vote for one person.
So we just go around the room?
Go around the room, and, and as any political body is capable of gamesmanship, the one change I inserted was that anybody who's called randomly to vote and doesn't immediately vote, then they're passed and they're done. So I know sometimes you can kind of look around and see who voted what, and this, this really isn't gonna work that well. It'll take that down a little bit. Again, that's, that's the written, or I'm sorry, that's the oral spoken ballot process. If you decided that maybe you didn't really like that, and you would like to go to a written ballot process, we can make that change fairly easily in here. But what it does is it, is it basically eliminates those people get the least number of votes until you finally have a majority selected by the council. Then you've agreed in advance that whoever that majority candidate is, that person will fill the vacancy.
And say there was three candidates, and it was the written form as opposed, each person would write down their choice, those would be tabulated.
Could, could be handed to Jordan. Jordan could name off the council member and their vote, the council member and their vote, the council member and who they voted for. And then tabulate that, decide if there's anybody who's been eliminated, and now have you do written ballots again, and do the same thing. But the moral of the story is, is that nobody gets to have a secret ballot.
Right. Any preference between those two options? Written versus oral? I think I, maybe the written seems like it might be a little bit cleaner and might eliminate some of that.
And, and I could propose, I could draft some of that language for you and have them both for you at the, at the September second meeting. And you can decide if, if you, which, which ver, which version you like.
Sure. It doesn't happen too terribly often, as you know, but anybody agree, disagree, don't care?
My only thought is on the, the spoken is just more time expedient, I thought. So if you had ended up having to do several rounds, it would be quicker, but other than that, I don't have a preference.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I would just ask if we can have our city attorney just draft up what those potential changes would look like, and then love to review it and make a decision. Sounds like we're looking at September second to, to potentially adopt these. Is that correct?
That's right. So I can present those to you at, at the September second meeting. If you're still haven't, you're still not satisfied, you can kick it back for for another meeting or two. It is important that we get this clarified. Our council handbook needs to be reconciled with state law.
Okay, sounds great. Those are the two changes. Anything else?
No, just need a motion.
Okay, I would take a motion to, well, in the direction would be to, to set this forward for that meeting, and then to have an alternate version for the written ballot on the second portion of this.
Motion to defer to September second for our final
Motion to defer to September second for our final decision and make that motion.
Second.
Motion, Lee Belt, second Ward.
Can I clarify? I'm sorry, Shar. Are you authorizing us to publish notice of the council's intention?
Yes, I guess I am.
Okay.
I also second that. Thank you.
All right, so we've got a motion from
Thank you.
Councilwoman Lee Belt, the second, Councilman Ward. Any other final thoughts before we take a vote on this? All right, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Hosenae, motion carries. Thanks, Ron. Appreciate it. You can hit the road.
Thank you.
Hope you feel better soon.
Thank you.
Next, we've got a possible approval for a pay request for our AIG AIP project. It's our airport terminal access road and parking lot engineering services, as well as to authorize the city manager to sign the following invoice title number four for the bidding services, nine hundred dollars and seventeen cents. And I would assume that both of these are to Helms and Associates. Invoice number five, construction administrative and resident engineering, sixty-two hundred and three dollars. In Rich's absence, Alan, who is our liaison, will step in and walk us through what he knows about these particular invoices.
I'm one of two liaisons, just to set the record straight. Councilman Norstrom also assists with the airport board. So transportation director Rich Kokel is unable to attend this evening's meeting, so in his absence, I'm happy to help navigate the next four agenda items, seven C through D. And as we've had the introduction here to C, just to clarify, this and the other three are all based on proceedings that took place at the August seventh airport board meeting. And this one is provided with funding ninety-five percent federal, two and a half percent state, two and a half percent city share. And these are for bidding services to Helms and also engineering services, so. Helms is the only vendor on this one. And let's see if there's anything else here. This project commenced last Wednesday, August thirteenth, and will be completed scouts honor before the snow flies. We're confident that things will go well and be done mid-fall and will not affect, affect any flight schedules. The website for the airport does and will continue to have updates available on the rerouting that will be involved in parking and the temporary lots that will also be added during construction phases. And also with the recommendation that because of that extra slight walking distance that people plan to arrive a little earlier, perhaps fifteen minutes earlier than in the past for flights. So essentially, this is the, the temp, the terminal access road and terminal parking lot project engineering and staff recommends approval.
Move to approve.
Second.
Got a motion from Ward, second, Knopfstrip. Any questions for Councilman Johnson and those two papers? Jordan, would you give us a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Lee Belt?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
E Conger?
Aye.
Nilson?
Aye.
Norvstrup?
Aye.
Mayor Shawnaman?
Aye, motion carries. Next, item D, possible approval of pay request for the apron reconstruction phase two is Helms for administrative and resident engineering services, forty-seven thousand thirty-two dollars and seventy-two cents. And to pay as well, re-deconstruction for their estimate number three, six hundred forty-three thousand seven hundred one dollars and sixty cents. This is work completed through the July twenty-fifth. Alan?
Correct. Thank you, Mayor. And this one is divided at ninety percent federal pay, five percent state, five percent local. Again, this has two vendors involved. And this is the long rectangular concrete pad area in the general aviation part of the airport. I think Rich said that it's being ported about a ten inch depth, so it's gonna last a long time and be a good new bed of concrete there and staff recommends approval.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion, Lee Belt, second, E Conger. Any questions? Jordan?
Councilmember Norvstrup?
Aye.
Nilson?
Aye.
E Conger?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Lee Belt?
Aye.
Mayor Shawnaman?
Aye, motion carries. Next, possible approval of payment to Helms, thirteen thousand nine forty. This is for the precondition air unit and as well to let Robin sign that invoice that goes along with it. Thirteen thousand nine hundred forty dollars to Helms. Alan?
Thank you, Mayor. And this also is a payment to Helms, the vendor for engineering designs and layouts. Essentially, this project is going to be an add-on to the existing jet bridge. That jet bridge, when it was built, had some electrical work that was done at that time to allow for this supplemental item. Ultimately, the vendor is Oshkosh Aerotech out of Roy, Utah. And this one is available, the payment of it is ninety-five federal, two and a half city and state apiece. And this is available through voluntary airport low emissions grant. That's the V A L E acronym there. So the current jet bridge, as you know, as you've used it, is climate controlled for both heat and cooling. And what this does is, it's a nice add-on, will condition the air within the plane itself. And so in the wintertime, it'll warm up the plane before you board and keep it comfortable. And similarly, in warm months, it'll condition the air to cool the plane. So nice to have. It'll be a nice add-on. Staff recommends approval.
Move to approve.
Second. Got a motion from Councilman E Conger, second, Councilman Nilson. Any questions before we take a vote? Jordan?
Councilmember Lee Belt?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
E Conger?
Aye.
Nilson?
Aye.
Norvstrup?
Aye.
Mayor Shawnaman?
Aye, motion carries. Next, possible approval and acknowledge of the FAA lease, airport lease number twenty-six, as well as to authorize Robin to sign that electronic agreement after approval by our city attorney, Ron Wager. Alan, tell us about this agreement.
Yeah, just in twenty-five words or less, there's a building that exists in the general aviation area of the airport and it is leased to the FAA. And there's no charge to that. It is a no cost lease and the current lease will expire next year, fall. And so this is setting the stage for the next twenty-year lease to go from October of twenty-six through September of twenty forty-six. And it just allows them to continue to operate from that garage location. They store things, they use it as needed. And it's just a perk of our working with the federal people in the FAA. So staff recommends approval of this land lease.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion, Ward, second. Was that you, Talmage?
No.
Second, Nilson. How often are the FAA officials gonna be found here in Aberdeen?
They come generally by appointment and it's a few times a year. For specific purposes, there aren't, to my knowledge, I'm not aware of many surprise visits, but this allows them to do their business and store supplies, materials that are just useful to them.
Thank you for that clarification. I appreciate it. We got our motion. Second, any other questions? Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Hosenae, motion carries. Next, we've got a pay request for our engineering department. We've got pay request twenty, number four, for five hundred thirty-three dollars, seven ninety-seven and ten cents, as well as an accompanying change order for sixty-five thousand one oh two and sixty-three. This will be paid to, is it Pram or Prom?
Prom.
Prom Construction. I see that they found a whole bunch of footings. They weren't expecting that. Was probably the bulk of that change order.
Sixty-five thousand dollars is almost exclusively, exclusively for the, the abutment that they found. That was from a previous bridge to the bridge that they just removed, so. And then, of course, the change order, or excuse me, the pay request is just for work that's been ongoing on the, on the bridge itself. So we recommend approval for the payment.
Move to approve.
Second.
Got a motion from Councilman Ward, second, Councilman Johnson. Looks like they've gotten a majority of the deck of it removed. They added a whole bunch of wooden stakes to the one side. Will those remain?
False work. No, that'll come off after they're done with pouring concrete.
What is the purpose of them?
They use that to help support things and also work platform, work surface for them to be on. I think, I think they're, they're completely done with the west abutment for the bridge and they're starting to work on the, the east and then the middle will have a support too, so.
And when did you anticipate their completion of the project?
It'll be this fall. I would, I would guess November probably would be. I, I don't, I don't exactly remember what their completion date is, but it, it'll, they'll be close to that.
Jordan?
Councilmember Norvstrup?
Aye.
Nilson?
Aye.
E Conger?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Lee Belt?
Aye.
Mayor Shawnaman?
Aye, motion carries. Pay request number three is next. It's thirty-four thousand seven eighty-eight and twenty-five cents. This is for the concrete repair project to CWF Masonry of Aberdeen here. All completed with that project for the year?
Correct. Thanks, Mr. Mayor. Yes, that, this is the first of two projects that we will be doing in this nature. It's just curb and gutter work in the chip seal area. We're bidding another project tomorrow. That will be the same thing for our next year's chip seal project, so we're gonna try to work ahead a little bit and get, try and get ahead of the game here. But this is just to release retainage on the contract. It's all completed.
Is CWF currently working on anything else for the city right now?
I am not aware of any. They, they had the accessible quadrant project earlier this year, but that's wrapped up as well. So I'm not, if they have something with Parks and Rec, that would be the only other thing and I'm not aware of anything, so.
Thank you. Take a motion. Motion to approve pay request number three.
Second.
Motion, Nilson, second, Ward. Any other questions for city engineer, Stu Nelson? Jordan?
Councilmember Lee Belt?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
E Conger?
Aye.
Nilson?
Aye.
Norvstrup?
Aye.
Mayor Shawnaman?
Aye, motion carries. Next is a pay request. A lot of those today. It's a hundred fifty-two thousand seven hundred sixty-eight dollars and forty-eight cents. This is for Klein Street Storm Sewer to B and B contracting. It feels like a bit of a throwback, Stu.
So this, this is really just releasing retainage. I mean, there, there was a small amount in there for the seeding, but we had originally wanted to hold on to a, a little bit of the funds there just because it was so dry this spring when they seeded. We didn't know. And then, of course, you know, we got just enough rain to make the weeds grow really good. And so we were, we were kind of concerned that we weren't gonna get a good stand of grass and we'd have to do it over again, but then it started raining and things looked fantastic out there now. So we decided we don't need to do that. We just will lease the rest of the retainage and we can close the project out.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion, Ward, second, Johnson. So the residents that had reached out up by the Manor Park area from that project, those, those boulevards look better now?
Yeah, they look tremendous now.
Great. Get up there and check those out. It was an ongoing concern. Glad it was taken care of. Got a motion, got our second. Any other questions? Jordan?
Councilmember Norvstrup?
Aye.
Nilson?
Aye.
E Conger?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Lee Belt?
Aye.
Mayor Shawnaman?
Aye, motion carries. Next, we've got possible approval of bids for our water tower transmission line. Schedule A, six million, excuse me, four million, six hundred sixty-nine thousand seven hundred sixteen dollars and thirty-seven cents to Dami Construction. Schedule B is eight million nine hundred thirty-five thousand to Landmark Structures of Fort Worth. Possible rejection of alternate bid schedule A. Stu, this is a pretty good sized project we got going here. How are we thinking it's gonna go?
So first of all, bid schedule A is, is for the transmission line part of this project and we did get what we feel is a really good price. We had several bids on that portion of the project and so we feel fortunate that we, we got a good price there and, you know, we're happy that we have a local contractor to work with too as, as well. The bid schedule B for the water tower, you know, only one bid and primarily due to the fact that because of the EDA grant and our kind of hard completion date that they have on that for the end of twenty twenty-six, the other interested bidders really didn't feel they could meet that timeline and were unwilling to submit a bid. So, you know, we, we evaluated what the best way to, to move forward is, whether we should have, you know, just rejected bids and, and tried to rebid it with a different timeline, but I don't think that at the time that was possible with, with the EDA grant, so we felt it was important to, you know, to be able to preserve that two million dollar grant. So we thought this was the best way to move forward to recommend approval on awarding the bid to oh, now I forgot their name. I'm sorry. Landmark, thank you. And then, of course, to Dami Construction for, for the pipeline portion of it.
And I will say, if someone is going to make a motion, the included language would be that this would be motion would be pending concurrence of an award by the EDA, who was chipped in some money, as well as D A N R, who is also doing some of the revolving loan financing. None of that D A and R money is grant money. That's all finance.
That's correct.
Move to approve according to how the mayor stated.
Pending concurrence of award by EDA and D A and R. We've got a motion, Councilman Ward, second, Councilman Knopfstrip. Jordan, how are you feeling about this, this number?
It, it's a large number with one bid. Puts us in a tough spot, but with the timeline that we're on with EDA, we have to move forward with what was presented.
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead.
Just a question for the city, city engineer. What, you know, what caused, I think this, this EDA grant had been awarded years ago. What, could, could you kind of walk through some of the, you know, how, what happened to it? And I believe the price too has increased substantially since.
You know, when, when this project was conceptualized, I think actually Lynn Lander was still the city manager at that time and it's kind of gives you an idea how long ago. I think we estimated our construction cost to be somewhere in the neighborhood of three to four million dollars, so.
For the structure or the transmission?
That would have been for the water tower. Well, actually, and, and the transmission line. And, you know, then, of course, we went through COVID and all the supply chain issues and all that stuff and prices went through the roof. So, you know, initially, we had hoped that that EDA grant was gonna cover about half the cost of this, of this whole project. And obviously, you know, that's not the case anymore, but we had conceptual plans and had I think three or four locations picked out for this. Coincidentally, the first location that we had selected was the, the site where we are currently constructing or going to construct the new public works facility. And Helms and Associates took that information to the FAA to get clearance for it and they rejected it. And then they proceeded to reject the next three places that we selected and, you know, we were fortunate to be able to negotiate with three M and, and purchase this piece of property where it's gonna go now. But that, that process took over a year and a half and you know, in the meantime, there's really nothing else that can be done. You can't really move forward with the project until you have that location. So, you know, once, once we finally got the approval for that, then, you know, we started design work and started moving. It's a, you know, it's a big project, complex project, so the timeline just stretches out, you know. I, I don't know, I mean- I, I don't know, I mean, we, we probably got a better bid on the pipeline part of it than we would have if we would've bid it two years ago, that, those kinda along the timeline that we originally got.
Towards schedule A to Dami of award by.
Approval by EDA and Danner. Would you give us a roll call on the first of those two motions?
Norvstrop?
Aye.
Mayor Shawnaman?
Aye, motion carries. Next. Move to approve.
Uh, just wanna, yeah, encourage us to always look future forward. I don't know if there was anything that we could do, uh, with the FAA, all that, that's, that's, you know, out of our hands for that, but just wanna encourage us to continue to think future forward, put investments. This is just tough, 'cause, 'cause the cost has continued to go up, but we need to take advantage of the, the EDA grant and get the money spent.
Oh, go ahead, Councilman Johnson.
Thank you. Yeah, this one does make a guy wince. You know, there's, it's painful to see that it comes in at two-point-four million above engineer estimate, and it's about nine million for that component of the construction. Is there a way to, um, presuming that this passes schedule B, uh, inform the vendor that, uh, this council may not have an appetite for any, um, change orders that increase that amount? Like, that's ballooned.
We, we certainly could have that discussion with them.
Yeah, I don't think there would be an appetite.
And, and I, I don't know if you noticed on there, but we are working with them right now to do some value engineering, um, trying to look at some alternatives that might be able to save us a little bit of money. We, we have about six hundred thousand dollars identified. We have to work through whether some of that will be, um, acceptable. But hopefully, we can, we can get the cost down a little bit.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Councilman Nelson.
Uh, Stu, thank you for the, the information on this. You said that the FAA portion of it was kinda the, the, the harder leg. Was the difficulty in getting responses from the FAA, were subsequent packets submitted timely?
Yeah, I think, uh, I think Helms was, was very timely on the way they approached their, their portion of this. It was just the, the, the amount of time that it took for the FAA to evaluate each individual, um, submittal that, that Helms turned into them, I think, was where the, the time delay came in. The biggest amount of delay.
Thank you.
All right, so Jordan, to clarify the motion itself, it is to award Aberdeen Water Tower Transmission Line Schedule B to Landmark Structures of Fort Worth in the amount of eight-point-nine-three-five million, and approve the council pending concurrence of the award by the EDA and Danner. Is that correct? And that, that, uh, jives with the motion that you intended to make, Councilman Ward?
It does, thank you.
Sounds great. We've got our motion, got our second. Jordan, would you give us a roll call?
Councilmember Norvstrop?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
E Conger?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Leebelt?
Aye.
Mayor Shawnaman?
Aye, motion carries. Next, possible approval, Schedule B, contractor delivery bid for the Public Works Building Granular Fill Material, four hundred fifty-six thousand three seventy-nine and eighty-eight cents to Jacobs and Sons. Stu, what can you tell us about the film material?
So this, um, as you may be aware, the, um, the site that we're going to be building, the new building on, is a former, um, holding pond site, combined sewage lagoon, stormwater, uh, holding pond. And so as you can imagine, as that was filled in, there was not a lot of care or thought given to the kinda material that was put in the holes to fill it in. You know, the, the, uh, material that we pick up when we're sweeping streets, that was a, a big component of it, you know, um, leftover material from, uh, water main breaks, that kinda stuff. So the site needed to be over-excavated where the building is going to be constructed. And in order to properly support the foundation, we needed to bring in this granular fill. This was the recommendation of our, um, our, uh, geotechnical engineer. So that's what we're electing to do here, is to bring in the material to basically fill up the excavation to the point of the bottom of the footings, so that we have a good stable base to build the, the building on.
I'll move to approve.
I'll second that.
Motion Johnson, second, Leebelt. Any questions? All right, Jordan?
Councilmember Leebelt?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
E Conger?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Norvstrop?
Aye.
Mayor Shawnaman?
Aye, motion carries. Next, possible approval and authorization of the city manager to sign our USGS Joint Funding Agreement for the Water Resource Investigations. Stu, tell us about that arrangement.
Sure, so this is an agreement that we enter into every year with USGS, and actually, this is, um, this agreement is actually for the twenty-four, twenty-five season. There was some staffing changes at USGS, and they just realized that they had not sent us out this agreement when they normally do, which would've been like last spring. So this is the agreement that we do every year to pay for our, um, stream gauging stations up and down the Elm River. Um, we have one here in town on Moxon Creek, and then there's also one on Foot Creek. And these are, these gauges are vital for us to, um, to help, uh, decision-making when we have flooding conditions. You know, if we have a, a big spring snow melt, we can use these gauges to help evaluate when that big push of water might get to town, or, you know, just, it's a, it's a really valuable tool for us. And, and in addition to that, then, once we get invoiced from the USGS, then, um, Brown County Emergency Management actually picks up half the tab for our, our share of it. So we will send them an invoice and get paid back for half of it. So, so it's a, we feel it's a really, really good investment for the city to do this.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion, Councilman Johnson, second, Councilman E Conger. Any questions for our city engineer on this? All right, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Pose nay. Motion carries. Final vote here of the night will be for our review and approval of our claims and payroll. I would take a motion to pay the bills. Motion, E Conger, or, excuse me, Nelson, second, Nobstrop. Anybody have anything they'd like to state before we take a vote? Jordan? Oh, go ahead.
Uh, I will abstain from the payment to Banner Associates.
You've got that, Jordan?
Yep.
Nelson will abstain. Banner's Associates, uh, would you give us a roll call?
Councilmember Norvstrop?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
E Conger?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Ward?
Uh, aye, other than I better abstain from the payment to my mom, Joy Ward. Uh, she played great in the municipal band, but, uh, pun intended, she did teach me how to play every note by the book, so, thank you.
How about climate control?
They're not aye.
Are you sure? I think there's one for climate.
There is, um, update, no conflict. Talk later.
Fair enough.
Councilmember Leebelt?
Aye, vote to approve Joy and all the others' bills.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Mayor Shawnaman?
I have three line item, extensions, climate control, sewer duct, and Jarman's water. Aside from that, aye, motion carries.